Welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. I am going to call the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for July 2nd, 2019 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the approval call.
Burke.
Present.
Fussard.
Here.
West.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Okay, the next item is the comments from City's presenters limited to three minutes. Go ahead Kurt.
Thank you Mayor. Mike Davis about two minutes ago told me I might want to do this, so happy to do it. I'm Kurt Fussard and I was selected recently as the interim executive director for the Middleton Chamber. And so very pleased to work with you in that capacity along with helping to lead the Good Neighbor Festival and a few other things. So it's my pleasure and honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much Kurt.
Anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, go ahead please.
My name's Dick Henricks and I live at 7346 Wayside Road in the town of Middleton. And I hate to bore you with another water problem, but as you may have already seen on the news or on TV, we have a major problem west of here with the water that's flooding this whole valley. And something has to be done because as was spoken about before these Tideman ponds, water can't get out of here. The pump in the creek that used to take all this water out of here for 46 years is broke and no one will take responsibility for it. And we have been to the town, to the county, to the state, to the DNR, and basically we get nothing. In the meantime, Hidden Oaks is flooded. Twenty houses over there are pumping with their sump pumps running 24/7. I feel sorry for those people. But the city of Middleton is a huge contributor to the Black Earth Creek watershed or the headwaters of the Black Earth Creek. All of those building, commercial buildings on North Greenview and West Greenview, all that water doesn't go into your storm system, it goes into this Black Earth Creek watershed. All of the water from the north side of the golf course goes into this watershed. There's a simple solution, we're not talking millions, for $15,000 we can fix this pump. I'll even volunteer to fix it. But I don't want the meter set in my name because I'm going to die one of these days and who's going to run, who's, you know, this is, this is a long-term project. So who's going to take, be responsible for this? It shouldn't be in any individual's name, it should be in the county, the town, the city, whatever. And that's what needs to happen. And I would appreciate it if maybe you would put this on an agenda for maybe another meeting because there's way too much information here that I would really need to cover in the amount of time you allow me. But this, this whole thing is getting worse and worse. It's flooding farmland, it's flooding businesses, and it's, even if it was dry, we had another, if we didn't get another drop of rain the rest of the summer, the problem wouldn't go away. Because this water is so spread out now, the pressure of the water is creating springs on outlying areas. And these springs are popping up now, one of them in the Hidden Oaks and others out further. And so something has to be done, so I'm asking for some mercy and for some help. Because we got to create a water district, not going to cost the city out of their general budget. We need to create a water district and assess all these places that are funneling water in here. The town of Middleton approved all these subdivisions out here in these hills and all of this stuff on the north side of those subdivisions, all coming into this water basin. And there's no place for it to go. The culvert under Highway 14 that normally would drain this, south of the railroad tracks, the culvert's three feet under the silt. And the Black Earth Creek is plugged with silt and downed trees all the way from the city of Middleton to the town across Plains. And you received a letter from Leonard Massey who's on the Dane County Drainage District Board, a very intelligent man. He's, he's walked this. We went with him, showed him everything and he's, something has got to, something has got to give somewhere. And I don't want to get this into the courts. That's dumb. This thing can be solved. I'm happy to show anybody any of this situation. I'm happy to even spend some of my own money to fix the pump, but some, this meter has to be set and temporarily keep pumping until we can get the county, the state, the DOT, somebody to clean out this drainage district. And the DOT by the way is, is very concerned because this water is up to Highway 14 and there's no rails and they're afraid if there's an accident and somebody rolls over into that water, they're going to drown. So there's, and the county, this is Dane County Park's land, they, they can't even get to the land. Everything on the north side of this land, they can't get to. They have to go through the warehouses I own in order to get anywhere close to their land and they can't get, they'd have to have a helicopter if somebody's walking the woods behind Hickory Woods or off of Hidden Oaks, they'd have to have a helicopter to pick them up because they can't get back there. It's flooded.
Yeah Dick, we had, city had the meeting with the Dane County Board of Supervisors and Luke was there and, and also the county people were there. So, so you know, we are working on, well, Luke Fussard is working on it, so yeah, really appreciate your input, so thank you.
Okay, well, I, I've been, I've lived here all my life in this valley. I'm on my home farm where I was born and raised, so if any of you want to know any history or if I can help in some way, that's what I'm here to do. But we, we have to solve this problem and it can't just go on and on and on.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much Dick.
Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead Luke.
I, I just want to briefly add and, and say my thanks to Dick who's been a champion of this issue for a long period of time. I live in the Hidden Oaks neighborhood, 8934 Red Barrel that he's describing and it is a dire situation. I think we are running into a, an air, a kind of a lack of communication between different government entities. Certainly Mike and the mayor and others have been very helpful in terms of willing to listen. I just think that we're, we would, I would love that same kind of cooperation from particularly the county and the DNR on this issue as well.
Thank you. Go ahead Susan.
Luke, I would like to invite both of you, I serve on the county, Sting County Lakes and Watershed Commission. We do have time for public comments and I think it would be really good for you to come.
Okay.
And the other thing is the commission, each year we don't have an actual budget of what the commission itself spends, but they recommend to the county board projects and things to spend money on. I can send you the form for, to fill out for information and I think that would be very helpful.
Yes.
This is something, you know, as a member of the commission, I think the county should be taken care of.
Right.
And I think we just need to get it more, more of the commissioners aware of the issue.
Great, thank you Susan. Thank you.
Thank you Susan, anyone else? Anyone else who wants to speak? All right, we're going to close that part of the meeting and we have a presentation from Middleton Area Development Corporation and the President Kevin Mahoney is going to speak.
Well, thank you Mayor and Mike, thank you for the invite, for the opportunity to be here and speak to the council about Middleton Area Development Corporation. For some of you, it may be a new organization that you haven't heard much about before. For others, they're very familiar with it. I'd like to cover in the next few minutes, give you a little background about the Middleton Area Development Corporation, which I refer to as MADC. Tell you about some of the initiatives that we had the past couple of years, take a look to the future and then if there's any questions or comments, certainly invite you to, to pass those along to me. MADC had its origination, believe it or not, some 50 years ago. Woodstock was not the only big thing that happened in 1969. MADC's roots go back to that same time period. And in the early eighties, it essentially went defunct. It wasn't, it ceased to exist. It was revived and resurrected by Mayor Ramsey and Vic Connor in 2000. And then there was an economic development agreement that Mayor Zwang put in place in 2003 with $2 million worth of funding from TID number three. And the mission of, of MADC was to provide economic assistance in the city of Middleton for businesses wanting to locate here, expand here, really to, to provide that stimulus, if you will, to aid businesses and make the city of Middleton more attractive. As MADC progressed along, there was a ruling in the Wisconsin Supreme Court in 2009 and following that in July of 2010, there was a resolution that was passed and I think Mike included that in your packet, that basically made MADC a private standalone entity. And I joined the board in approximately 2011, so I came on after that occurred. And since then, MADC has, has continued to exist, if you will, as this standalone entity that provides financing here in the city of Middleton. Today, we operate with over $4 million in assets. That's comprised of loans, investments in a venture debt fund, deposits, and our ownership in the terminal out at the airport. Some of the proceeds that were used, some of the proceeds from the initial funding were used to build the airport. The tenant for it is Maury Airplane Company. We've renewed that lease, he's, Rich Maury has been a great, great tenant for us and that's a special asset, if you will, for MADC that sits here in the city of Middleton. As, as an independent organization, we have our own legal counsel and our own independent CPA. We file taxes and all the taxes are current and up to date and we have regular financial statements as well. Our board of directors consists of nine members, two of which are here with me tonight, Mayor Brar and Mr. Brock over here, Burke, excuse me, along with some of the original members from 2000, Mike Pettah and John Geigel. Andy Lewis is also a member of the board, Jeff Swetler, Eric DeWard, and Deanna Porter along with myself comprise the, the board of directors. We continue to focus on providing an array of lending programs. We have, we regularly take a look at the airport terminal and see, to make sure that, the lease is current and also that the property is in good condition. And then we provide economic assistance with a check annually to the city of Middleton because of the working partnership that we have. It's not just a one-way street with MADC out there, it's the city also engaging MADC when they see appropriate opportunities. And I can't say enough about the great collaborative effort between the city of Middleton and MADC. And when I was here back in, about two years ago in 2017, I shared with the council some of the initiatives that we had in front of us. And one of them was board recruitment and development. We've done a good job with that, bringing on Eric DeWard from Standard Imaging, Deanna Porter with Broadwing Advisors and Jeff Swetler, Senior Vice President with State Bank across Plains. We also tackled upgrading our website and I'm proud to tell you that we got through that. We worked with the local Middleton company here, Crisilis designed to do that. It's, it's easy to navigate, has some great content. We talk about some of our success stories and the various loan programs that are available. And obviously there's some contact information, how to reach out to me for interested parties. But I think that's an, it's a great access point. If Mike or Abby happen to be talking to a potential candidate for an MADC loan, they can steer them that direction and, and they can learn more about MADC. We also renewed our airport lease for another five-year term and most recently, we spent $20,000 in upgrades. The Maury Airplane Company has been an excellent tenant. The building at 15-years-old required a little TLC. Since MADC owned it, we used our own capital to provide some new paint and carpeting. And if you haven't been in there recently, I think you'll be very pleased with the touches. That is again, one of the gateways to our community and I'm very proud of the work that Rich and Debbie did out there, getting that pulled together. And another initiative that we identified a couple of years ago was more outreach to our area banks. We arranged a lunch meeting with the help of the Middleton Chamber to do that. We've, have ongoing conversation with banks, making them aware of what MADC can do to help possibly supplement some of their financing. I can tell you as a banker, this is a very competitive banking environment. Banks are very aggressively willing to lend and I think as a result of that, MADC hasn't seen quite the activity that maybe we would have in the past, but opportunities still exist. And the other outreach effort that I've been involved with, the Middleton Chamber has their monthly economic development lunches. I've been asked to present at that on behalf of MADC a couple of times. In fact, Mike, you and I shared the spotlight for one of those. So again, we're out there in the public eye, making bankers aware of what we do. And also, we're starting to do a little more outreach with the developers because the developers are bringing in tenants who are in need of some supplemental financing and we fit into that role very nicely. When I look back over the last couple of years, we've had five loan applications, we've had one loan renewal in there. Of the five applications, all were approved but one. We treat the loan process with a high degree of confidentiality. We do a lot of due diligence and underwriting of the loan request. We have to meet with the applicant, we review projections or historical financial informations, tax returns, look at their financial condition. Generally, we find a way to get a loan done. We try to be, if you will, everything to everybody. Our loans, if you will, over the last few years have ranged anywhere from $20,000 to $2 million. So we're, we have really a broad array of financing vehicles. I also am in discussions right now with two possible candidates for additional financing. These, this process can take place in 30 to 60 days or it might take three to six months. These, these two I'm in discussions with are taking a little bit longer and we don't know yet whether or not we'll actually have an application to MADC. But we do have capital available. With the loans that we have and the investment we've made, we have $3 million of capital available for lending here in the city of Middleton. That may sound like a lot, but if an opportunity comes along to provide a loan for a million or two million or half a million, we're going to deploy that, those assets, that capital to the, to the right loan fit. So we're, we really have, I think, accomplished a lot. We've, we've put a focus in the downtown area to help with some lending programs there and we've been successful with that. I'm particularly excited about what lies ahead for MADC in 2019, 2020, and 2021. We continue, as I mentioned, to reach out to area banks and developers and beat the MADC drum so that they know we're there to help with their efforts or supplement what they're doing. And they know more now about MADC than ever before so that we are a viable solution for some of those financing problems they may run into. Our website, as I mentioned, is up and running and presents MADC as a, a good option for anyone looking to locate here into the city of Middleton. We are looking at earmarking a portion of our capital for higher-risk loans. We have now had a track record that we want to take a look at carving out some of that capital to see if we can explore some higher-risk opportunities. An example of that may be if a startup were to possibly locate out here at the UW Research Facility and there was a higher degree of risk, we might stretch a little bit more with these types of funds to assist them and, and their location into Middleton. And then a couple of other items to pass along to you. Thanks to some help here, we have a seat on the airport planning group that's meeting. Deanna Porter represents MADC at that. With our investment in the terminal, we feel it appropriate to just take in the information that's ongoing there. So we are engaged on that front. I mentioned that we provided capital improvements to the terminal this year. The, the other area that I am very excited about is your downtown plaza. Quietly, MADC has played, I think, a very successful role. We were an early supporter of that effort. We also provided some bridge financing for the assembly of the property. And we are now going to take a leadership role in the initiative to help start, help boost and start the fundraising effort. So we believe in downtown Middleton and the city of Middleton. Our capital goes to work here. When I look back over the loans that we've made since 2000, we've deployed over $8 million in loans. We've not had any losses. I give the board a lot of credit for their help in underwriting loans properly and I think the future looks bright. I especially want to recognize Mike and Abby, the collaboration that we have working together on opportunities to attract, enhance Middleton as a place to do business is just outstanding. And Kurt, also I know you're, you're the new kid on the block, but the Middleton Chamber has also played a, a very, very good role in helping with that. But Mike and Abby, again from the board, thank you very much for all you do to help us do our jobs. I think with that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Questions for Kevin?
I'll just.
Yeah, go ahead Doc.
I just want to also thank you Kevin. This was a great synopsis of what MADC does. And what you did not say and by, by, because you're, you know, you're quiet and humble is that you, you really have worked a lot of extra hours to make MADC successful, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good.
Any other questions or comments?
Great, well, thanks again for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thanks Kevin.
You're welcome.
Thanks Kevin.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Next one is sad event, but this is the proclamation in memory of Scott Ellerson and his service to the city of Middleton. Whereas Scott tragically passed away on the morning of Sunday, June 16th while recovering from a stroke. And whereas Scott served the city of Middleton for 30 years from 1987 to 2017, he passed 14 as chief building inspector. And whereas Scott had a big heart, was compassionate about his work and known among his fellow staff members as possessing a hearty laugh, huge smile, and a great stories. And whereas Scott should be remembered for being a quintessential public servant in every sense of the word. As an example, he once worked with the senior center to ensure an elderly resident would be able to make a necessary improvements to stay in his home. And whereas Scott's contribution through his job and other active activities will leave a longstanding impression on the city of Middleton. And whereas there are too few adjectives to describe Scott's hard work, so let him be remembered as an exemplary employee, friend, and most importantly, human being. While gone, Scott will never be forgotten. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Gurdeep Brar, Mayor of the city of Middleton, on behalf of all the residents of Middleton, extend our deepest sympathy to the Ellerson family and all of Scott's friends. We thank Scott for his long and distinguished career to the city of Middleton. Scott will be deeply missed. We note that Scott's celebration of life will be held at a later date for one last cast. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on 2nd July 2019.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the proclamation say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Okay, agreements. Agreement for HRA plans and trust with North Shore Bank for the third-party administrator of post-employment sick leave benefits.
Approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Yes?
Just, just a couple of quick ones, just to make sure I understand. I think if I read correctly, the vesting period is 10 years?
I think five, right.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The, the city had, had modified the ordinance perhaps about a year ago to put a vesting requirement in of 10 years and 480 hours of sick leave or retirement through the WRS system if they're eligible for retirement.
Okay, so, and it's, it's either, it's either not vested or fully vested, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
And if they retire in less than 10 years, but they have the 480, I, I, I heard you have a caveat there, so.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it had been that if you retire according to the WRS system rules, as long as you're eligible for retirement to receive a benefit and annuity through WRS, you would be eligible for the sick payout. We had modified it with the change that was done approximately a year ago to also say if you're leaving service but not retiring officially, that then you have to have at least the 10 years and the 480 hours. We did have, have some situations where employees had been with the city for a few years and then left to go to another employer and were having a bank cashed out and that's what was modified.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So the motion is to approve the agreement with North Shore Bank for the HRA plans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number two. Amendment number one to engineering agreement with RS Smith for utility duct score protection at Baskerville.
Motion to approve as.
And the amount not to exceed 5,400.
Sorry, my mistake. Motion to approve as recommended by Public Works and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Utility is paying for it, so any.
The MMSD is paid.
MMSD and, and utility.
That's very different.
Yes.
And the sewer utility.
Yeah, they both share, yeah. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. We are on to item number three. Norfolk Three Pond Study Amendment to Agreement with MSA in an amount not to exceed 13,500.
Move to approve the amendment not to exceed 13,500.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Where's the money coming from?
It's the fees and...
Okay.
Yes.
Real quick question. I hate three-letter acronyms. What's BMP stand for?
Management Practices.
But, thank you. Okay. No further...
Like more letters?
I don't, I don't like multi-letter acronyms, apparently.
Gotcha.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Susan, could you repeat that into the microphone? I can't hear you. Best management practices. Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve this agreement with MSA for Norfolk Three Pond Study for money not to exceed 13,500, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passes unanimously. Item number four, Middleton High School Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Yes. We're going to need it to be subject to the attorney approval. It doesn't have a legal description yet. The agreement is fine, so this is modifying paragraph two to add a legal description so this document can be recorded. So, and that's in process. But it hasn't been completed as of this moment.
Yes, Robert.
I can't look at a contract without pointing out some things. Can I just send some, some of it's just formatting or spelling errors, which are really not important. There is a missing heading in section number seven, at least on the copy that I have, right under 6B Burning Routine Maintenance. There's seven with no heading or anything, and there's some formatting issues that I would correct, and I can send those to city attorneys or whoever would like to see that.
I would recommend you send them to Gary Who's.
Okay.
Because these are typically form documents that are prepared by Public Works.
Okay.
Or by a consultant engaged by Public Works. And they are based on a form, which I approved many, many years ago.
Sure.
But the basic format is pretty much the same, except for the work that is actually required to be done.
Okay, I'll get my modifications to city engineering.
Robert, the seven is actually there. It's just formatted poorly. It's right under the sub-paragraph B, 6B.
Oh, under, wait. I see the number seven, but what is every other, every other number?
Yeah, it's just formatted. It's just formatted incorrectly.
What's, what's the number seven? What is the wording? What is the subject for number seven? That's what's missing. That's what I...
Yeah, that, okay, that's missing.
Because if you look at six, which is also poorly formatted, there's, there's, they're missing underlines. They don't, you know, they all, all the other ones, though, say what section five, section six, whatever are, section seven, blank line. That's what I'm wondering what it's supposed to be for that subject.
Right.
Let's fix it.
I'll, I'll, I'll take care of it with engineering staff. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? So, the motion is to prove with the approval of the city attorney and all other things, and then Robert is going to send his corrections. And with all those caveats, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passes. Award of bid, quote, and professional services.
Move approval as recommended.
Would I please, item number one, award of professional services contract with Cardinal for Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor Restoration and Improvements Master Plan in an amount not to exceed 36,000, $36,400.
Move approval is recommended by CLC to award the bid to Cardinal.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Robert, you have something?
No, I, I, I'm just the one who screwed up the first time by, by speaking over you. I apologize earlier for that.
That's okay. So, yes, Susan.
I would like to thank the Friends of Pheasant Branch for giving the city 18,000 to cover the cost, part of, half the cost of the study.
18,200, yes.
I think that was incredibly generous, and they raised a huge amount of money to help the city with storm repairs.
And also the people that donated to the city.
Yes, and the people that donated to the city.
All donations that we got in amounted to 20,000.
We are thankful to all those who donated to the city and donated to the Friends of Pheasant Branch as well. Yes, Mike?
Could I ask that the council include in its motion the funding sources so that we have that?
Yes.
Recorded in the, in the motion?
Okay.
Do I need to...
Well, as approved by Finance. Funding sources were in Finance.
But it needs to go for the council minutes. It would be good to have Friends of Pheasant Branch and donations to the city for storm repair.
Right. Splitting 50/50.
Okay, all right. So, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passes. Item number two, proposal from Weirbecker for preliminary design of the South Pond West Bank Erosion Control.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
And where's the money coming from? Or did you, are we waiting to come up with it?
This one, I think, is clearly a repair issue for the pond. So, stormwater is appropriate.
From stormwater. It hasn't been to stormwater yet, though.
It has not been.
No.
This is what Gary, what Sean had said, was that we're going to try and piggyback this onto something else. So, I think it's appropriate. It's clearly a maintenance issue.
Yeah.
It's $1,900.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passes unanimously. Item number three, proposal from ACS Incorporated for Pheasant Branch Archaeological Survey.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? This is only if we might need it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item miscellaneous items, item number one, use of the stormwater utility funds for Graber Teedman Pond Concept Designs.
I'll move approval that we spend the money for, for doing these studies, but defer until next finance committee, until we find the appropriate source of funds.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Susan?
Yeah, I would have liked to have actually, I've actually seen the proposal from MSA. It should have been included in the council packet, though, and wasn't.
This agenda item was intended to foster discussion about the payment source, not so much about the agreement itself, which is still being negotiated from a proposal turned in by MSA. So, my understanding is Water Resources Management Commission still is going to be discussing some of the scope of work and the actual fee, which will be brought back to the council at a future time. So, if you want to defer taking action on the actual agreement, that would be fine for Water Resources to discuss that first.
Don't even have a final dollar amount, because you were, they were going to renegotiate what they wanted to get done.
That's right. So, so I think this discussion was intended to be about, is it appropriate to use stormwater utility funding, or should some other funding source be identified, but not to worry so much right now about charging into identifying a consultant or scope of work or price, because some of that, we don't know yet.
We had approved MSA.
No, what we said was that they were, we were going to...
It's confusing.
No, I think stormwater said that...
This is the one we...
We want to see the, the money reflected accurately, right? So, Gary was going to go back and renegotiate with MSA for the right fee.
It was with MSA.
But the other part was whether or not it was appropriate to spend from stormwater. And I think, you know, the discussion at council, I mean, at Finance, I don't think it is, because most of this is aspirational, right? And so, I don't see any harm in deferring this or referring this back to Finance, that after Bill can come up with some other supplemental funding sources. I still submit that, you know, what these proposals, what we've seen so far, are clearly not maintenance to the ponds. They are adding capacity and improving beyond what's there already. And that those expenses are more than likely than not something that the stormwater, or more likely than not, not something that the stormwater utility should pay for.
I didn't understand. No.
Pardon me?
Okay, I'm going to ask, okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
What is the difference between, how do you differentiate, like, you have erosion control or flood control? Erosion control does count for stormwater, flood control doesn't?
It depends on the existing facility, right?
Well, we have your South Pond, and they have to design something. It's design work, both of them.
No, but, but for the South Pond, there was a listing spillway that was essentially decimated by the floods, right? So, what that's doing is, is saying, okay, well, you know what? We need to replace the spillway.
Right.
That's appropriate. That's a maintenance issue.
Well, then...
Right? So, what we're, what, what the difference between that and what we're going to, what MSA is proposing for both these ponds, is that they're expanding the capabilities of those ponds beyond what's there existing.
But the erosion control didn't hold, so they're going to, that's going to be enhanced, I would imagine, because they want to use the articulated block. Okay, that's a different project.
Excuse me, please.
But what I'm saying is the design, erosion control, flood control, I just want to know how they, how they're so different. I mean, I just think that flood control is, is very important to these people, and, and I would like to see this be taken out of what, stormwater utility.
Again, you're arguing about the...
Is that, excuse me, please.
Just let me finish.
No.
This is the discussion that we're having.
She's going to the floor. You're not...
She just finished.
I'm done.
What we're saying is that, no, I don't believe anybody on the council is saying we shouldn't do these things.
Right.
What we're saying is, what is the appropriate funding source?
Right.
And what these, what previous councils have said...
Okay.
Was that the stormwater utility fund should be used solely for maintenance of existing structures.
The first $15. No, this was...
I would argue that the even...
The resolution was for...
Okay, I'm going to let Larry answer the, this question now.
Okay.
And once and for all, and we are not going to have this discussion again. I thought it was settled, and we just bring it back again and again. Okay, Larry, let's go at it.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry that I didn't know I was going to be asked this question, and since the motion was to refer the source of funds to the next council meeting.
Next finance meeting.
Next finance is fine. I would like to be given the opportunity to research all of the documents that have been adopted and give a comprehensive answer. I'd rather not speak off the top of my head and actually refer, refer to the actual adopted resolutions and other documents from, from the past that relate to this topic. So, one more time.
But I asked, I asked these same five questions, and you answered it. I don't have that email here.
Right. I did answer them. I am absolutely...
No, no, you did answer.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
So, then I would move to defer this to the next finance meeting.
No, we can defer the discussion.
There's a deferral motion.
But do you want to fund this? I mean, you want to move this forward?
What Sean has just told us is that it was not necessary to fund right now, that they're still negotiating the price for MSA.
And a deferral motion takes precedent.
So, your deferral is to...
I'm going to defer, I, my move to defer this to the next finance meeting, and then in order to give Bill an opportunity to look at funding and to give Larry an opportunity to look at the legalities.
Okay, so that need a second.
Second.
Kathy seconded.
Oh, Kathy did. Okay, any, yeah, go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, I feel like I need to say something on this. Larry, thank you for taking the time to look into this and reading, going back and actually reading the ordinances. I would also suggest looking at the PowerPoint when we established, that was presented to council when we established the utility. I think quite a few of you were not on council at that time. Mark and I were. I don't know if you were Kathy or not. But that clearly gives a lot of background information. I would also like to say in all of this is, with the referendum for repair of stormwater, of damage to stormwater facilities, we will bring in two and a half, 2.6 million. We have to prioritize what we spend our money on. We've got a lot of things that we're going to need to. So, that decision needs to be made in terms of the whole city and not just one area.
Thank you, Susan. Mike, and then Robert.
I would encourage the council to think about preventive maintenance as well. And I think this is a prime example of preventive maintenance. One of the things that hasn't come up in the discussion here is that the road was flooded due to the flood of Teedman and Stricker Pond. That road is a prime artery north to south between Middleton and Madison. And if we don't have preventive maintenance for this pond, we risk being in that position again with a major rainfall.
Okay, Robert.
Yeah, I would, I would ask that one more fun document for Larry to look at would be the actual wording of the referendum that was in April. And Mr. Davis beat me to the punch that, yeah, maintenance is, comes in all forms. I think preventative maintenance is one of them. I guess I, one thing positive I want to say is, I was very pleased that in the finance committee prior to this meeting, it seemed like the general feeling of the people in that committee was strongly that we want to pay, we want to pay for this. So, I think that's the message that we need to get out there to everybody. We want to make this happen. We wanted, we want to look at what are the best ways to help our, our ponds and prevent them from flooding. We're just working through some details of where that money comes from, but the idea is not that we're going to do it or not going to do it. The answer is, we're going to do the study. We're just figuring out the details of where that money comes from. So, I want to leave my, my statement off with that very positive note, that I think what I'm seeing is, is a very strong support for, for trying to resolve these issues going forward.
Okay. And you already spoke. Luke?
She can go, and then I'll go.
Okay. Susan, and then Luke.
Yes, we should be allowed to speak if more than one time.
Well, but, but there are others who should have the opportunity as well. I mean, we don't want only one person to be just monopolizing it. All council members should have the opportunity. Luke, go ahead now.
No, go ahead, Susan.
I had my hand up.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Susan, go ahead.
My hand was up before.
Fine.
I would like to say, we're going to have to come up with quite a bit of money, and it's going to be more than 2.6 million. That's where I have concerns where we've, and in this study, the MSA study, I've already, I've read through what was presented at Stormwater Utility and Water Resources. Two of the projects for remediating Teedman Pond are going to cost a million dollars. That will take almost half of what we will be bringing in on the utility, just for that one project. We have a lot of others. So, we're going to have to prioritize and come up with multiple sources of funding, because I think it would be unfair to not bring South Pond up, which is a ma, one of the two major stormwater ponds, and it's, has a huge effect on the entire western part of your district, Kathy. And that's a major one. The Creek Corridor, there is a lot that was not damaged significantly that was not engineered, so FEMA will not be paying for that. We need to reroute some of the channel to figure out how to make water go through there without damage. That's going to cost a tremendous amount. In addition to damage at Graber, we've got storms or sanitary sewers going across creeks that have been washed out underneath, not just Baskerville, but near Century, that we have to get straight. So, we need to look at all of these and then prioritize what we're going to be spending money going forward. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, Luke, and then Kathy's. And I do want to, you are already aware of this, that the South Pond is already going forward. And I do want to, you are already aware of this, that the South Pond is already going forward. Okay, Luke and then Katie.
Yeah, so given the discussion that happened at the Finance and to Robert's point, I pulled up the language of the actual referendum itself, which I think is important to remember, which is the City of Middleton Stormwater Utility shall be permitted to charge customers of the Stormwater Utility an annual charge of up to $45 per equivalent runoff unit from each property for the years 2019 through 2024 only to fund the repairs to the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor, Tiedman Pond, Stricker Pond and other Stormwater management features that were damaged by the August 2018 flood. And then in the explanation, it says, "A yes answer means that you support the City of Middleton's increase in Stormwater Utility fees to repair the substantial damage from the August 2018 storm." So that just kind of reiterates, I think, that this, the funds are for maintenance and repair rather than that new, to Mark's point.
Katie.
I, I'm just wondering if it would help the council as well as our constituents, if there was some sort of way to visualize, if there was some sort of graph or illustration that we could show the scope of the comprehensive work that needs to be done with this amount of money and perhaps a list of the priorities that people could look at and say, okay, you know, I'm really worried about my backyard flooding again, but I know that it's coming after this project. I know that I'm on the list. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm just wondering if that would be a helpful tool.
I think I can take a stab at that. So one of the tasks that the Stormwater Utility has is to essentially come up with the budget for 2020 and beyond. And so part of that process is to prioritize what needs to be repaired and how we see those projects being laid out.
Any other who wants to speak before Susan? Anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, go ahead, Susan.
Katie, in terms of that also, we're still getting, and I think Mark's here, we're still getting information as to where all the damage is. And we certainly haven't let very many contracts out yet to even know what projects are going to cost. And so it's a little bit fluid and that's where part of the problem is, is people on Stormwater Utility Board don't even fully know all of these projects. I'm not even sure city staff does on all of them.
Any other questions?
Does somebody have like a big board where it is located?
There is a document that, of listed of projects that Bill has sent out. But again, we still don't, those are just rough estimates.
But it could be created. I mean, it's not something that can be created, so.
Yeah, we do, we originally, from our original damage estimates that we had submitted through FEMA, had estimated about six and a half million dollars in total in damages. Not, not all of that is Stormwater, that includes other things, including trails and bridges. We've been trying to keep that updated as we go through the process of design and submitting things through FEMA. So now that we have bid numbers for the Donna Drive Pond and for the Park Street slope, we've been trying to show what those numbers are. There are some areas, like large stretches of the Creek Corridor, where there hasn't been designed and hasn't been bidding yet. So those numbers are still somewhat fluid. But we can take what we have and send that out to everyone as an update to kind of show from that original six and a half million and what pieces we know and what we're still working on determining.
Bill, can you make a clear distinction which of those are truly Stormwater versus other storm damage? So parks, you know, trails, playground equipment and stuff, it's not going to be paid for by the Stormwater Utility. We need to separate that out.
Yeah, we, right now it's organized in categories based on the FEMA reporting. So there's a category for water control features. I think there are still some internal questions and discussions about what is going to be Stormwater Utility funded or not, but at least that would break out what was roads, what was parks and trails and what is in that category of water features, yeah.
Okay, Katie, is that good enough?
Thank you.
That's a really excellent point.
Well, I'm a visual person, so it sounds like for me, things would be getting lost all over the place. So I, I was just wondering about that. So thanks.
That's Mike.
I just wanted to try to address Katie's point a little bit further. And that is that the non-engineered portion of the Creek Corridor is the wild card. That's what we really don't have a good handle on yet. But the Cardinal Study that you just approved tonight will help us to get a better handle on that. And so just trying to tie these things back, because that is the one that we've had a hard time coming up with real estimates. A big part of that is in the planning process, we want to do better than what we had. We want to make sure that what we do to the Creek Corridor is in thinking about greater than the hundred-year storm or flood and how we can mitigate effects. FEMA won't reimburse us for mitigation. You know, there were $55 million worth of projects statewide. They funded 10 or 11, mostly for homes that were underwater. But Middleton did not qualify. We, we applied for mitigation and did not get those funds. So that's the wild card. That's where we might need more funding for capital budget projects in the future. And I think it's important to make that pretty clear.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? The motion is to defer, so all those in favor of the motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes, six one. The ordinance, second reading. An ordinance to create chapter thirty-four of the City of Milton Code of Ordinance is relating to the illicit discharges into the municipal storm sewer system.
Move approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments? So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. John, I know we are a little bit beyond this, that under item one, so there were three RFPs from RS Smith, MSA, and then there was I.R.S. And RS Smith was $17,000, the others were 44. And should I talk to Gary or you tomorrow? And why are we not taking RS Smith proposal?
I think, yeah, we could have that discussion at the staff level, that would be fine.
Okay, so I will, okay, thank you. Item number two, this is a second reading. Zoning ordinance amendment to permit structures taller than 35 feet in the R1 and R2 zoning district with a conditional use permit. And it's only the churches and the school.
Move approval? Second.
Any questions, Robert?
I have a question.
Yeah, Robert and then Kathy.
Robert, go ahead.
The missing word.
Is the missing word "from"?
The missing word is "from."
Then that's.
Line three.
That covers my point, thank you.
And I just want to say in the comments, we had struck the rest homes and nursing homes from the allowed uses. And that's, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion after making the suggested changes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are on to planning and zoning. Item number one. This is a general implementation plan amendment to add hotel as a conditional use for lot number one of the Airport Road Business Park, 3055 Deming Way.
Move approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments? This will be the building, the vote is somewhat west of the Spectrum, north of the Spectrum Building. Yes, Luke?
I'm sorry, it just, it says, "We have concerns, staff has concerns." Can you elaborate a little bit further maybe, Abby, on that one?
Mark reviewed this from our department and we're working with the applicant. I met with them this morning. In summary, the concerns are related to the amount of development that's being proposed on this site and the lack of green space. And we specifically compared this hotel to some of the others in the city and similarly sized hotels had larger lots. So this is on a 1.6 acre lot, it's a wedge-shaped property. In particular, access on this site is difficult because it's on the curve there of Deming Way. And we encouraged the applicant to share access with either the Spectrum property and you can see the driveway into the Spectrum property, kind of on the north part of their site. We were hopeful that they would be able to secure cross-access from Spectrum or possibly negotiate something with Lee, Bruce and Jean Whittish, who are selling them the property and who own the property to the west, so that they could share access, but to reduce the number of drives from Deming Way, but also so that they could have two, an alternate point of access to the site. Unfortunately, we learned this morning that they have been unable to secure either of those things and so they plan to proceed with their submittal as it stands. The other concerns I can think of off the top of my head, there's a drop-off within the concept site plan and in order to access the drop, you actually have to circulate your vehicle throughout the whole site, turn around at the northwest corner of the site and then come back in order for the passenger side, the drop-off side, to be aligned with the drop-off zone. So just, there are some problems with the site plan, it's just a little funky. It is a challenging site because of the wedge shape, but at the same time, I'm hoping that we can make some headway with some of the staff recommendations that we have.
So just one question, Abby, so you think that they could be handled at the staff level?
Well, what's before you tonight is land, it's a rezoning, a GIP amendment to add hotels as a conditional use. We don't have a concern with a hotel as a land use in that location or in the business park in general. The applicant would then need to proceed with applying for the conditional use permit and they plan to do that and bring that to the Plan Commission Meeting on August 13th. And that's when design review for the site will happen and that's when we can make some recommendations for some modifications we'd like to see to the site plan.
Susan?
Yeah, Abby, I don't have a problem with the conditional use, but the idea of the hotel not having the appropriate circulation, does this go to the fire department for approval too?
Yeah, I sent them to the fire department today. They hadn't met yet with the fire department.
That, I could see them having a big problem.
That's an excellent point, Susan.
Yeah, and I guess one more thing, this is on our Plan Commission agenda for Tuesday of next week for concept review. So the Plan Commission hasn't reviewed the site plan yet and they haven't made any recommendations at this point.
The only thing we did on Plan Commission was agree that hotel could be conditional use.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? The, the motion is for the, for the amendment to add hotel as a conditional use for lot number one. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Resolutions. So this is Resolution 2930 approving the issuance of the tax incremental financing bond for the Star Dust Development LLC. This is a goodwill project, they have spent the money.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The next one, the committee appointment, appointing Daphne Wu as a high school representative to the Sustainability Committee.
Move approval?
Second.
He's simply amazing candidate, so. Incredible, yes, Robert.
How many people do we have on sustainability?
Just one.
Sorry?
Just one student.
No, I, I get that, just I'm curious for the whole, the whole.
Just ten members total.
Okay, and have we?
They're non-voting members.
And that's great and I'm very supportive of her joining. Just questioning, have we had high school students before?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
And do we regularly have them? Awesome.
Yeah, go ahead and answer it, Abby. It's, we have had one student all along, so.
Yeah, I believe we've had four or five high school representatives on the Sustainability Committee. It's been a really beneficial partnership, going back to when we were doing the Green Thursdays free monthly sustainability seminars. They would recruit other students to join and learn more about the topic. Through Clean and Green, when we were able to recruit volunteers and also just helping to get the word out to high school students about things that are happening with the city. There, on the last Sustainability Committee agenda, there was some interest in encouraging the school district to consider a 100% renewable energy resolution. And I think that maybe that would be an initiative that the high school representative would be, you know, a good person to be involved with that. And then the last thing I was just going to say is that we have Daphne Wu, who's being appointed to the Sustainability Committee and the city just hired Daphne Zhu, X-U, who will be our new associate planner. So it's interesting because Daphne is not a very common name, but not to be confused with Daphne Shu, who will be a city staff member.
Susan.
Student member is stipulated by ordinance.
Yes, it is, it's in the, it's in the ordinance, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Yeah, she's one of, she's on the John Hopkins Talent Committee or something. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes, we need a motion to get into a closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to get in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so we are in closed session now, so.